Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. It is 3 o'clock, and I'll call the meeting to order. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees, welcome you all to our, all of our guests who are attending both in person and virtually for our first public board meeting of the 2025-26 school year. We pray you all had a rejuvenating and relaxing summer and that you're ready for what promises to be an astounding year, an incredible year of hope. We're pleased to celebrate and acknowledge many special guests who've been invited to today's meeting, including principals, assistant principals, joining us for special recognition, and of course, we even have some special guests. And so, please indulge us, and we'd like to introduce our special guests, and then we're going to leave it to Chief Superintendent Anderson. We haven't forgotten about our principals and assistant principals, but you're being acknowledged in a slightly nicer, more impactful way. Not that our special guests haven't, but we've already had our meet and greet with them, so thank you very much. So, from our Boiler Makers Lodge 146, we have Genevieve McFretridge, Community and Industry Relations Specialist, Boiler Makers Lodge 146. And you're going to find out what that's all about very soon as well. From Nate, now I don't know if, do you want to give a little wave there? You don't have to.
Do you want to give a wave?
Yes, give us a wave so that everyone can see. There she is, there she is. Thanks, Genevieve. Thank you. And so, we did have someone from Nate representing us, but he's not here today. He had to leave, but he is the Dean of Nate's School of Manufacturing and Automation and School of Transportation. So, we did have an opportunity to speak with Stephen, and so it would have been nice for you to see him as well, but he does send his regards. From the Minister of Education and Childcare, we have Jennifer Robson, School Accreditation Lead for Collegiate Schools with School Accreditation Monitoring and Print Services Branch. Boy, that's a mouthful. And then we have Eric Tetrow, Director of School Accreditation Monitoring and Print Services Branch. Eric and Jennifer, do you want to give us a little wave? I think you're still here. There, there they are. Thank you so much. We also have our very own ECSD Division, our new principals and assistant principals, and I'm not going to call you all out each by name right now, but it's coming, so get ready. But we also have, and typically, we have our ATA here as well. I don't see, is Amber here as well? Okay, Amber, give us a little wave. I don't see where, she's on her way. Okay, Amber's on her way. And so, for our President Amber Nicholson, and of course, our Vice President Owen Holloway. And I'm so glad to see that you're still coming to these board meetings. Thank you so much. And of course, from our Lumen Christie Division staff, we have our senior leadership and our other division staff and community guests who also typically come to welcome us, come to join us for our public board meeting. But you know, we also want to share a very special welcome to our Chief Superintendent Anderson. We'd like to commend you and your team for the exceptional start to the school year, and we look forward to the journey that we're going to experience because we are going to have an incredible journey this year, full of hope and endless possibilities, endless opportunities, I should say. That ensures excellence for all of our students. And on that note of excellence, and as a community of faith, we do have Father Julian with us. So, Father Julian, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Palazzo, Trustees, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Brothers and Sisters in Christ. Let us begin, as we always do in our Christian Catholic tradition, with God's great sign of love for all of us. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. A reading from the Holy Gospel according to Luke. Glory to you, oh Lord. Jesus spoke these words to the crowds. To what, then, will I compare the people of this generation? And what are they like? They're like children sitting in the marketplace and calling to one another. We played the flute for you, and you did not dance. We wailed, and you did not weep. For John the Baptist has come eating no bread and drinking no wine, and you say, he has a demon. The Son of Man has come eating and drinking, and you say, look, a glutton and a drunkard, a friend of tax collectors and sinners. Nevertheless, wisdom is vindicated by all her children. The Gospel of the Lord.
Praise to you, Lord Jesus Christ.
Friends of Jesus, in today's Gospel, Jesus reflects on the challenge of pleasing everyone. He's comparing people of His time to children in a marketplace who find fault no matter what is done. John the Baptist's strict lifestyle drew criticism, while Jesus's openness and closeness to sinners drew just as much. This tension between expectations and reality is something we can all relate to. Leaving our Edmonton Catholic schools means balancing many responsibilities: academic excellence, spiritual formation, community engagement, and stewardship of resources. We hear different voices: parents, teachers, students, parishioners, and the wider community, each with hopes and concerns. But Jesus reminds us that measure of work is not in universal approval, but in the fruitfulness of our efforts. Wisdom is shown by its children, the students we form, the faith we nurture, the values we instill. As trustees, you're entrusted with a sacred mission: to help create an environment where students grow intellectually, morally, and spiritually, where Christ is at the center of all that we do, and where the legacy of Catholic education shines brightly. We will face criticism and challenges. There will be times when decisions feel difficult or misunderstood. Yet, like Jesus, we must hold fast to our mission and trust in God's guidance. Our goal is to serve the true good of our students and community. We pray today for the grace that you may be wise and courageous leaders. May your efforts bear the fruit of well-formed students who are not only academically capable, but also grounded in faith, ready to be the light of Christ in the world. Thank you for being faithful, thank you for your faithful service on behalf of the Church. And may God continue to bless your work that you do and that is vital ministry in our Edmonton Catholic schools. The response to our intentions is, Lord, hear our prayer.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For Catholic education, that our Catholic schools may reveal the glory of God in all that they do, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That our Catholic schools may fill students with a love for learning and a desire to change the world for the better, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
For Catholic education, that our Catholic schools may continue to nurture relationships of hope, faith, joy, and peace among students, parents, and teachers, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
That all our teachers, staff, administrators, and trustees in Edmonton Catholic schools may be strengthened for their important task in our world and be blessed with God's abundant mercy, we pray to the Lord.
Lord, hear our prayer.
Grant, we pray, Almighty God, that receiving the grace by which you bring us to new life, we may always glory in your gift through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
The Lord be with you.
With your spirit.
And may the blessing of the Lord be upon you with his grace and love for all of us. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you very much, Father Julian, and as typical, for your guidance, your inspirational leadership, and for being a champion of hope for Edmonton Catholic schools. Moving on to 1.2, we'll call upon Vice Chair Tchansky to please read our land acknowledgement. And I'll put her in queue first. Go ahead, please.
That's why I don't have to yell. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as we gather this September, a month of return, learning, and gathering, we pause to recognize the land on where we gather and the children who were never given the opportunity that our own children had. We are guided by relationships of respect, reciprocity, and responsibility. Their teachings remind us that the land and the water is not a commodity, but a living relative to be honored. This month also brings us the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation on September 30th. We honor survivors of the residential school system, their families, and the communities, and we mourn the children who never came home. We commit to learning the truths of this history, listening to indigenous voices, and taking actions that support healing, justice, and the safety and flourishing of indigenous children today. In that spirit, we invite everyone, especially our students and educators, to engage with the calls to action, to wear orange in remembrance, and to practice daily acts of reconciliation grounded in kindness and accountability. May our words be matched with deeds, and may our presence here reflect gratitude for the original stewards of this place and a shared responsibility to care for the land and the waters for generations to come. So, we acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of Treaty VI and homeland of the Métis. We also acknowledge the Inuit and other diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors have marked this territory for centuries, a place that has welcomed many peoples from around the world to make their home here. We at Edmonton Catholic schools commit to restoring and honoring the truth and reconciliation calls to action. We strongly believe that truth must be acknowledged to move forward to reconciliation. Together, we call upon all of our collective communities to build a stronger understanding of all peoples who dwell on this land we call home.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Tchansky, for the beautiful land acknowledgement tribute as it does set the stage in our calls for action and as we continue to celebrate our theme as a people of hope. Next on the agenda is 1.3, and we'll note for the record that all trustees are present. Moving on to 1.4, approval of the agenda, and I am looking for a motion to approve today's agenda as circulated, and do see trustee Mutella in queue. Go ahead, please, trustee Mutella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve the agenda of today's meeting, September 17th, 2025.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
Thanks.
Thank you. And seeing no one else in queue, I'll now call the vote. Thank you very much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion to approve today's agenda as circulated has been approved. And as such, consent items, pardon me, 1.4.1.1, CEO Report on Summer Activities 2025, and 1.4.1.2, Activation of Alberta Education School Codes for St. Allegius Catholic Collegiate, and all recommendations contained therein have also been approved. We'll now move on to Approval of the Minutes, 1.5.1, and once again, we are looking for a motion to approve the minutes of our regular board meeting of June 18th, 2025, and I do recognize trustee Harris in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'll move that we approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of June 18th, 2025.
Thank you very much, trustee Harris. Do you wish to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And seeing no one else in queue, once again, I'll proceed to call the vote. Thank you very much. As all trustees once again have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record the motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of June 18th, 2025 is carried. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to 1.5.2, and as there are no matters arising from the minutes, we'll move on to 1.6 on the agenda, Bereavement of Mia Shislav Demko. And over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We were saddened to hear about the death of Mia Shislav Demko. I invite Superintendent Kennard to share how he was a cherished member of our Edmonton Catholic Schools community.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson. We regret to advise the Board of the death of Shislav Demko, known as Mike, on July 13th, 2025. He was a cherished member of our Edmonton Catholic Schools community. Mike served faithfully as senior custodian for 26 years, demonstrating unwavering dedication, compassion, and pride in his work. Over the course of his career, Mike contributed to several school communities, beginning at Sir John Thompson, followed by St. Gabriel, Bishop Greshchuk, and most recently, St. Joseph High School since 2022. His steady presence and commitment enriched each of these schools, leaving behind a legacy of care and kindness. He was more than a colleague. He was a beloved father, son, brother, uncle, cousin, and friend. Shislav was known for his reliability and kindness, always showing up when it mattered most. He cared deeply for his school and the people in it, ensuring not only a clean and safe environment, but also a welcoming one. His presence and contributions left a lasting impact on our school communities, and he will be profoundly missed. On behalf of the Board, an expression of sympathy has been sent to his family. We extend our heartfelt condolences to them and to all who had the privilege of knowing him. Please keep his loved ones in your thoughts and prayers during this difficult time.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendent Kennard, for sharing the beautiful tribute for the unfortunate passing of a cherished member of our Edmonton Catholic family, and thank you for acknowledging the gift that Shislav and Mike was to all of us. He will be dearly missed, and while his loss leaves a void, we're confident that his indelible legacy will be fondly remembered for a lifetime. We reiterate heartfelt condolences to his family and school community for the loss of a beautiful soul and that eternal rest and perpetual light rest upon his soul. I don't see anyone in queue, and so may he rest in peace, and we will now move on to 1.7. Thank you very much, Superintendent Kennard. We will move on to 1.7, and I can finally settle down because I've been dying to acknowledge our principals and assistant principals, and it took every ounce of, now I can be myself. I took every ounce of energy not to mention all of your names, but I know that we can't, even though we'd love to say them 50 times during this public board meeting, I am going to turn it over to Chief Superintendent Anderson to do the honors, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and trustees. So, if you recall, on August 21st, 2025, we welcomed 10 new principals and 29 assistant principals to their new Catholic educational leadership roles through a blessing and symbolic gesture at our Catholic Educational Leadership Opening Meeting. All of our school-based leaders have completed a formation program through Leadership Services in preparation for their new roles, and they will now embark on further formation and training with mentors as they begin their new journey of servant leadership. And so, it's my pleasure to formally introduce them to the Board. So, as I mentioned before, if your name is read, we would ask that you give us a little wave, and so that we can put a connection to the name and the face. So, we are delighted to first introduce our new principals. Roseanne Boutin at Blessed John Paul I. Rochelle Irvine at Holy Child. Catherine Voth, St. Boniface. Delia De Souza, St. Elizabeth. Damarra Benoit, St. Martha. Christina McLaughlin, St. Vincent. Carmen Markowski, St. Augustine. Elizabeth Evaristo, St. Bernadette. Chelsea Andristrock, St. Clement. Suzanne Campio, St. Teresa of Calcutta. And so, these are our 10 new principals. Congratulations. And now, it is my pleasure to introduce our new assistant principals. And so, we first have Christy McCoy at Christ the King. Gregory Hansen, Divine Mercy. Antoinette Tab, Father Leo Green. Erin Stock, Father Michael Moreau. Sophia Lobo, Holy Trinity. Kate Wojewski, J.J. Bolan. Mandy Jensen, Joan Carr. Thomas Zudnick, Louis Sainte-Lara. David Kirilik, Monsignor Fee Otterston. Jason Geis, Mother Margaret Mary. Helen Stable, St. Angela Elementary School. Erin Pruski, St. Charles. Leslie Olesku, St. Edmund. Akua Kenkam, St. Elizabeth Seaton. Lisa Kruchshenk, St. Gerard. Erica Metcalf, St. Martha. Shelley Hillaby, St. Pius the 10th. Danielle Meunier, St. Teresa of Calcutta. Justine Buttigieg, St. Thomas More. Olivia Hernandez, Blessed John Paul I. Connor Renshaw, J.H. Picard. Linda Hoingraquel, St. Cecilia. Nicholas Freeman, St. Gabriel. Delise McNamy, St. Paul, sorry, Dallas. Sarah Figuero de Toledo, St. Teresa. Carrie Wilson Hackett, St. Anne. Michelle Carabio, St. Catherine. Catherine Newman, Cardinal Collins Clareview. Amanda Yakamission, St. Martin. And so, we are thrilled to welcome our new assistant principals to Edmonton Catholic And so, Madam Chair, our recommendation is that the Board of Trustees acknowledges and welcomes our Catholic educational leaders to their new journeys.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, and congratulations. So, let's have a little bit of fun here. I know I'm not going to ask you any questions, so don't worry. But I can see that my colleagues are getting giddy here, and the minute this item came up, I could see the vice chair just kind of clapping her hand. So, I'm going to start it off because I like to always steal the show, and then I don't leave anything for them to say, but that's never true because they always find something. That being said, welcoming 10 principals and 29 assistant principal is absolutely remarkable. We're humbled. We are truly humbled by your service and passion to share the extraordinary gifts that you bring to your schools each and every day, and we commend you. We commend you for answering the call to leadership and being champions of hope, and that's what you are. You are champions of hope. We applaud you not only for your courage, your faith, and your resilience, because that's what it takes, but we applaud you for accepting the leadership challenge. And so, we know that at the end of the day, you do. You may not face challenges on that particular day, but you do face challenges because that's what leadership is all about. But yet, regardless of when we see you, you always have a smile on your face, and that's exactly how the students see you as well and your staff, and we commend you for that. Because being a mentor and a role model carries great responsibility, and so for that, we commend you. We're proud to walk with each and every one of you in your leadership journey, and we thank each and every one of you, as well as to the mentorship that you have received and are currently receiving. So, we do want to share commendations to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, and to your team for all of the amazing ECSD leaders that we have at Edmonton Catholic Schools and how everyone walks together to ensure the success of all. Thank you and congratulations. And of course, my queue is full, so I will have to open it up to the rest of the Board. So, please bear with us and enjoy all of these beautiful, I'm confident, all of these beautiful sentiments that are going to be shared with you today. First in queue is Vice Chair Tchansky. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, for this occasion only, I brought my Farrah Fawcett fan so that you guys would think, oh my God, look at how cool she is, and new eyelashes for you guys, and only for you guys, because this is, I know, it's a big deal to me. So, you guys are amazing. All of that aside, it is amazing. When I walk in our schools, we know where it starts, right? It starts at the top, and it cascades down, and the top has such an impact on everybody. So, the fact that you have stepped up to be in a leadership role anyway, because we know that S rolls uphill, it does not roll downhill, and it stops with the principals and the assistant principals. So, we're grateful for that. These days, it's a heavy burden and a heavy role. So, we're grateful for you and all that you do for our families, our students, and the fact that you're mentoring and you're examples for these kids and their families is unbelievable. You guys make such an impact. I still can remember my most important teachers and principals and assistant principals and what they did for me as a student, never mind how I see it now as a trustee, the impact that you have on our communities. It is extraordinary. So, thank you very much for what you do. It is not easy, and there'll be days when you will pull out your hair and you will think why, but know that we are behind you, and we are grateful for all that you do, and we are in your corner. So, thank you for you stepping up, and we can hardly wait to do this together.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Tchansky. And I just want you to know that she did bring me a Farrah Fawcett fan, only I got the black one. I wonder why. But that being said, thank you very much. Trustee Engel, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome. And a lot of you I will only recognize by your waving hand, because we did not sit in order of height. So, we saw these little hands going up, so I'll try and remember if I can. You know, I want to thank you for saying yes, because it's a call to Catholic leadership, and it's not an easy role. It asks much of your heart and much of your spirit, but it is truly a vocation. In our Catholic schools, you are not only leading academics, you are helping form disciples and keeping faith at the center of everything we do. For many of our students, school is their church, the place where they meet Christ and feel they belong. Your leadership makes all of that possible. You are missionaries, and you are evangelizing. I am so deeply grateful for your commitment. I go into the schools and I see principals at lunchtime putting on their running shoes, supervising kindergarten classes, no sub-in. You're almost, it's unbelievable. Principals, if I had a way to describe them, I'd say they're superhuman people, and vice principals as well, because they look to you for a lot of help, believe me. So, I'm deeply grateful for your commitment, and I want you to know that I will keep you in my prayers, and I will ask God to guide and strengthen you in all that you do. Once again, thank you so much for stepping up, and congratulations, and I look forward to seeing you in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Engel. Next in queue is trustee Tiber. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, tonight, we get to do one of my favorite things. We get to welcome an incredible group of leaders who have taken on new challenging roles. So, first, congratulations to everyone. You know, stepping into these roles is no small thing. You're not just leading schools, but you're leading communities filled with students, staff, family, parish partners, and who are all counting on you. No pressure, right? But we all know that today's education world comes with its challenges, and you know, whether it's the new technology, supporting diverse learners, figuring out how to deal with the endless emails, your days will be full, just like your inbox. But you know, what makes Catholic education so special is that we don't face these challenges alone. Look around you. We do this work with faith as our guide, leaning on each other, keeping our focus on what matters the most, helping our students grow academically, spiritually, and personally in a publicly funded Catholic education. That is beyond special. So, take a deep breath. I know it's already almost a month, month, oh my gosh, it's almost been a month. Yeah, some more than a month. My goodness, you've been going at this for a while. And don't forget to, you know, really celebrate those small victories. It's going to get even busier, as you're all aware, and know that leadership that you're doing, it really does make a difference in the lives of the children and the families. So, we are excited to walk alongside you and to see and witness all the amazing things that you will do, and we really look forward to coming in and being able to celebrate with you on all of the things that are going to happen in this next chapter of your life. So, we are so glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Tiber. And one thing that we will add because we are recording this publicly, thank you for each and every one of you who are putting up with those large class sizes, and when you have your meet the staff night, and then they come in and see those large class sizes, I'm sure that you are the first people that they go to. So, thank you to each and every one of you for that as well. Thank you. Next in queue is trustee Mutella. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and everybody has said such wonderful, good things already, so I'm not going to repeat everything, but I just want to say a big welcome and congratulations to all of the new principals and assistant principals, and it is a vocation, like trustee Engel said, and you guys are the faith leaders at your school and community, and you are the ones that'll be setting the example for everybody in your schools, and it is a big job and it is a big role to play, but you stepped up to the challenge. God called you to do this, and I know that you will do it, and you have our prayers and our blessings, and I'm looking forward to coming into the schools and working with every one of you, especially the ones from my school.
I knew she was going to put a plug in there for her schools. Trustee Harris- Trustee Harris, go, thank you very much. Trustee Mutala. Trustee Harris, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. You know, our, our theme from a couple of years ago was "God Calls Us Each By Name." And, and it strikes me, you know, when, when that call happens, there's a choice to be made. And I just want to express my deepest appreciation and gratitude to you for, first off, not only answering the call to this beautiful profession, this beautiful calling, but also answering the call to leadership. As my colleagues have said, thank you all for taking on these incredibly important roles, shaping and supporting these learning environments, these working environments. These are fundamental to our community. We've talked about this before, but it basically is, as we know, our schools are, are the answer to the most fundamental prayer of our parents. The most fundamental prayer of any parent is that their child receives a phenomenally good education, a beautiful education in a loving and caring environment. And that's what you create in your schools and in your school communities, not only for your students, but also for the families. And, and you know, we know that this is tough sometime, a lot of the time, and we know how much heavy lifting you do. And I just want to express deep, deep appreciation for you stepping up into these kind of roles. It's been expressed before that we know that this tone in the school gets set by you folks. And, and that ripples right through and has impacts into every corner of those, of those schools. We know that you will lead with love. We know also that you will lead the way for your beautiful students and your staff and families, to the true, the good, and the beautiful. Again, deepest appreciation to you. Thank you for doing this and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. And as this is not a motion and seeing no one else in queue, I'm honored to read the recommendation for the record. But before I do that, I just want to say, "Well done, good and faithful servants." That the board, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees acknowledges and welcomes our Catholic educational leaders to their new journeys. Congratulations, each and every one of you. Yes, and one more, one more clap. There you go. And while this next agenda item is another reason to celebrate the gifts of our cherished ECSD colleagues and family, 1.8 tribute to retiring trustee Terry Harris's bittersweet for our board, and it is with mixed emotions that I read the background. Yeah, there comes the Kleenex box. Yes, thank you. As we prepare for the upcoming term, we recognize that trustee Terry Harris in Ward 71 will not be seeking reelection and is preparing to retire from his role with the board. It is my honor to pay tribute to him as he prepares for this new journey. Terry has served with dedication as a trustee for Edmonton Catholic Schools for two terms spanning eight years. A proud graduate of our division, Terry began his career in administration with Edmonton Catholic Schools before moving into senior leadership roles in both the public and private sectors. He later ran a management consulting firm for nearly two decades and taught employment relations and law at the university level. During his time as trustee, Terry provided strong leadership as board chair early in his first term, and most recently as Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee. He has represented our board in many capacities, including the Senate of Newman Theological College, the Teacher-Empire Bargaining Agency, and the Alberta Catholic School Trustees' Associations, to name a few. Terry's commitment to service extends beyond our division. He has been active in the Catholic community as a member of the Knights of Columbus and Catholic Social Services Board, and in the broader community through organizations such as Skills Canada, Alberta, the Autism Society of Edmonton, and the Bent Arrow Traditional Healing Society. Throughout his career and his service as trustee, Terry has remained humble, seeing his role as a privilege and an opportunity to positively impact students and families. We extend our sincere gratitude to Terry for his leadership, faith, and commitment to Catholic education. His contributions have left a lasting legacy for generations to come. Trustee Harris, it is my great honor to thank you personally for your diligence, your passion, your trust in policy and process, and for your excellence in governance. In all the years that I've known you, I've admired your strong work ethic, your diligence, being extremely prepared for meetings, and despite having to read hundreds of pages in preparation, as that is typically the case, you remain objective and competently identify and ask pertinent questions of relevance, always keeping your role as a governor in check. Your transparency, accountability, and fiduciary responsibility is to be commended. Your due diligence, knowledge, and of course, we're going to also mention your prudent fiscal prowess, your skill set and intelligence leave big shoes to fill. We, as a board, have always been able to count on you, as you continue to fulfill your responsibilities even today with grace, professionalism, and integrity. While you never lost focus to ensuring high performance and educational excellence, you also welcomed all and made everyone feel special and unique. You are a true example of an exemplary Catholic trustee who lives our ECSD mission and vision in everything that you do. Thank you for making a difference. Thank you for leaving a legacy, and thank you for inspiring us. And to you as well, Trustee Harris, well done, good and faithful servants. Thank you. Now, they didn't give me the Kleenex box. I wish I had the Kleenex box, but I don't, I get to, you know what, I get to kind of relax for a little bit. No, no way. Now, before I turn open queue to the rest of the board, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Superintendent Anderson first, and then we will follow the board. Go ahead, please, Chief Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trustee Harris, on behalf of Edmonton School, Edmonton Catholic Schools, we do want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to you for your dedicated service to our division. You have been a steadfast advocate for Catholic education, bringing wisdom, compassion, and integrity to every decision and discussion. Throughout your tenure, you have exemplified our shared commitment to our mission. Your thoughtful leadership, unwavering support for students, families, and staff have left a lasting impact on our community. Whether in board meetings, school events, or moments of discernment, your presence has been a source of strength and encouragement. As you embark on your new chapter, we celebrate your legacy and thank you for the many ways you have enriched our division. May the next chapter be filled with joy, rest, and continued blessings of faith and family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson. And first in queue with the Board of Trustees is Vice Chair Tchansky. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So today is a sad day for me. And although I do want to celebrate and give thanks for Terry, who of course is stepping away from our Board of Trustees after eight years of remarkable service, I also want to say how sad I am for me. And quite frankly, sometimes it is all about me. You are my conscience and my guide, and honestly, the very best work husband a girl could ever ask for, and my husband even says so. So you have always brought practicality, process, process, clear thinking, and a deep love of math to our board conversations and to our audit and finance meetings. But even more than that, you bring with you a deep love for your faith and a profound respect for our administration, our elders, our vulnerable learners, and is always reminding us of the importance of walking together, listening, and learning. Outside of the boardroom, Terry's humor and warmth are just as steady as his selfie arm. Whether it was our friendly competition to see who could get to a meeting earlier, or the ongoing joke about how he seemed to end up in his armpit in all of the group photos, Terry had a way of turning even the most serious settings into moments of genuine connection. At the heart of everything that he does is his family. He has an amazing wife and son, and his daughter also is along for the ride. The poor girl, we never see her because he always brings Kevin to the events. And Terry, your devotion to them is absolutely clear and is, your, your, your love for your family is extended into Edmonton Catholic Schools, and, and the love and the joy you feel for both of that is, is palpable. So you understand that schools are more than places of learning, they're communities that shape faith, values, and family life. And in fact, I don't think that there is a boiler room, a janitor room, or a funky area in the deep, deep bowels of many of our schools that Terry and Kevin haven't visited. And what was the trade-off, you ask, for Kevin and this joy? Hard labor. Kevin has probably built as many playgrounds in the last eight years as our ed facilities, our facility services and ed planning has. And I am so deeply grateful for the time and the care that you have given to Edmonton Catholic Schools. The staff, the families, the students, and the community is better because of you. Your example of faith, family, and community will continue to inspire us, and I want to thank you from the, the bottom, bottom recesses of my heart. You will be missed, but your legacy is everlasting. Thank you.
Thank you for the beautiful tribute, Vice Chair Tchansky. And trustee Harris, I don't know if you got Genevieve's name. She's the, yeah, so you know, in the event like the boiler, I'm just trying to make the connection here, Genevieve. Maybe you could stay until after the meeting and just talk to trustee Harris after this. Next in queue is trustee Mutala. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Vice Chair Tchansky. And Chair Latso has given wonderful tributes already. It's going to be an emotional time. Terry, I just want to say congratulations on another retirement, okay? You have been a good and faithful servant on our board for the past eight years. And I can remember when we started out and we went and did all our school tours and how amazed you were what happens in the schools and how it was just overwhelming to see what our schools do. And it was overwhelming for all of us as well because they weren't just a place for Monday to Friday. Those kids got, some of the kids got to take food home and everything for the weekends, and that was their safe place. I appreciate all your hard work and dedication on the committees, all the committees, especially the financial ones. And we know that you have a wonderful knowledge of budgets, and we know how you love numbers. I wish you all the best in your next role in retirement and wherever God calls you to serve you. He'll be serving Him again somewhere, but I know that your love of your family, and then you're going to spend some wonderful quality time with Eileen and Kevin and your rest of your family. So congratulations. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you very much, trustee Mutala. Next in queue is trustee Engel. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I generally don't write anything down, and I generally stare at Terry to see what he's thinking, but I wrote things down and I'm not going to stare at Terry. Terry is truly a disciple of Christ. Everything he does, he does with faith, with wisdom, and with heart. He has given so much to this division during his eight years of service. Terry has been both chairman of the board, and for the past seven years, he's been chairman of the Audit Committee. His leadership has been hardworking, steady, and extremely effective. Our schools will miss him, our families will miss him. Edmonton Catholic Schools has truly been blessed to have Terry serve these past years. What I admire most about Terry is his genuine ability to celebrate the joys, but also he has the ability to stand strong and offer support in difficult times. I want to thank his wife, Eileen, and his children for sharing with us. And I really want to thank Eileen because we ladies kept him out quite late, quite often. And for me personally, I am grateful for the friendship we built, and I know it'll last a lifetime. Terry, thank you for your faith-filled service, your wisdom, and your heart. We will miss you, and we wish you God's richest blessings in the years ahead.
Thank you very much for the beautiful tribute, trustee Engel. You know, the good thing is, is that Eileen never had anything to worry about because he never went out with one of the trustees. He went out with all of us. So it was like a whole entourage, and he was the, a lot of jealousy going on when we went out together. Trustee Taber, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first of all, I will not look at you because we all know what will happen. But, okay, trustee Harris, this is not, this is a farewell, farewell. But you know, as you begin this new chapter beyond the Board of Trustees, I know you won't be far. Your heart for Catholic education will always keep you connected. So I am very grateful for your strong foundation that you have built. You've given those who come next some very, very big shoulders to stand on. And over the years, you have brought your passion, your wisdom, your willingness to listen, adapt, and always do what's best for kids. Even when the conversations weren't easy, you truly embodied an excellent trustee. And we will miss your sharp mind for numbers and stats. Thank goodness someone was keeping us all on track all these years. Especially during the audit and finance meetings. So CMO Schultz, you're up now to keep the board in line, just so you're aware. Your contributions, you know, they have left a lasting impact on our division and our community and our hearts. Now, while we will miss your presence and your knack for making audit and finance almost fun, almost fun, I do wish you very success as you step onto another exciting new chapter. I want to say a new chapter, not a new book. Okay? So new chapter. So thank you for everything you've done to make a difference.
Thank you very much, trustee Taber. Excellent, well done. And seeing no one else in queue, I will read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges and celebrates outgoing trustee Terry Harris on his retirement. Trustee Harris, congratulations. And while...
He's not quite done yet.
We're not quite done?
No, but he's not quite done.
No, I'm going to let him speak.
No, but I mean, he's not quite done.
Oh, no, no, absolutely not. And so that's exactly it. While we understand that you may be stepping down from office, trusteeship, did I cover that? You will forever be trustee Terry Harris, extraordinary to our board. Chief Superintendent Anderson, if, with your permission, I believe the board would like a photo with trustee Harris, and then I will turn it over to you, trustee Harris, should you want the opportunity to share sentiments with the board. Yeah. Is it okay if we take a photo?
No, we want a photo with your tears in it. Because I didn't cry for change.
Unless we want to take it up here, trustee Harris? What's best? Here? Okay.
Here? Put him in the middle.
We'll put you in the middle. May we have you in the middle?
I want one last, our pit photo. Right here, baby. I know, it's the greatest spot.
My God.
He's got excellent deodorant, you have no idea.
Thank you very much. I thought I would keep them up here because then it would be easy to get them to sit down again, so. Trustee Harris, if you're ready, I'm, I'm sensing that you would like to say a few words, so I'll turn the mic over to you.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I, I now know who I'll, or who I should refer Eileen to, to do my eulogy. And what also occurred to me was, was I should have recorded this because then I could have shared it with Eileen because that's not what I hear at home. I must admit, this is beautiful. I want to thank you all. As you know, I could go on forever, but I'm going to try and keep this uncharacteristically and mercifully brief.
It's your time, do whatever you want.
I am very moved by your wonderful comments. As I've been moved throughout these last years by your thoughtfulness, your kindness, your compassion, and your deep love of this division, our students, teachers, and staff, it is really remarkable, and you all are absolutely remarkable. Your dedication, your positive energy, your intelligence, and your boundless goodwill. Totally remarkable. I will share that this, it has been an honor for me to serve our community in this capacity, the experience of a lifetime, these last eight years. The experience of a lifetime, these last eight years, and I've enjoyed every minute. Well, maybe not every minute, but yes, it has been a labor of love. It's been a journey of learning. And this was alluded to earlier, I want to thank you so much for teaching me about the breadth and the depth of this amazing work. I must admit, I had absolutely no idea when I started how complex and how deep and how heavy the lifting. That was an epiphany. And I want to thank you so much for teaching me about the importance of understanding the stories behind the data. It was referenced a number of times, my, I'm an analytic by, by nature and I gravitate to that. And at the same time, I think that there's a much greater appreciation on my part for understanding and appreciating the stories that'll never make it into the data. Or at least they, they don't get reflected well into the data. And it is, it is, these are the, this is, this is, this is what's happening in our, in our, in our division. This is what's happening in our families. I want to thank you so much as well. It's been a journey of caring. I want to thank you so much for building and nurturing these loving relationships. And it's been a journey of answering a call to faith filled service. I always times think, I, I always think though, what could be more motivating? What could be more motivating than working with amazing people in the progressive realization of a worthy mission that elevates the common good, that impacts the lives of our beautiful students and families in very meaningful and positive ways? What could be more important than helping these beautiful students become the very best versions of themselves, building their lives around the true, the good and the beautiful? With Christ as their model and teacher and with you guiding the way? What could be more beautiful? What could be more important? To you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, our administration, our teachers, our staff and families, you do so much heavy lifting. I thank you. We thank you. We're here to support you. It has been an honor for me. It's been a privilege and it's been an absolute pleasure. And to my board colleagues, Debbie, Laura, Eileen, Lisa, Sandra, it's been an absolute honor serving with you. All such different characters and yet all working together with kindness and respect and generosity, goodwill and good humor. A very cohesive team, serving on a board that through its faithfulness, faithfulness to its core mission, the core mission of the division and through its diligent exercise of good governance, faithfully serves our students, our community, our division and by extension, all Albertans. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to work with you, the opportunity to work with you, the opportunity to work with our families and our students. And I may, may God bless you and God bless you all on the journey ahead. Thank you so much.
Now trustee Harris, I hope you do recognize that you got the biggest audience yet in all these years, that you have, not only did they come to be acknowledged today, but you have 10 assistant principals, no, you have 10 principals, 29 assistant principals. You have division staff here and they're all here for you. I just want you to, now that being said, there may be some of you who need to leave. You can stay, you're more than welcome to stay. But for those of you who do need to leave, because we know that you have schools, but I say just go and take the gift of time, but you know, do what you need to do. We are going to move on to number two, business of the meeting. So we'll leave it to you. So I just don't want anybody to think, why is everybody getting up? And no, you can get up, it's all good. Yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you so much for coming and enjoy the rest of your afternoon. Thank you.
Lost our audience.
There we go. Maybe trustee Harris, you could keep talking and they'll come back. Thank you, everyone. And after an exciting opening to today's public board meeting, we'll now proceed to business of the meeting 2.1. Edmonton Catholic Schools collegiate update. And we'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So we are really delighted to present to you an update on our Edmonton Catholic Schools collegiate. We know that Alberta continues to see growing demand in the skilled, skills and trades. Collegiate programs support student career goals and helps them address critical labor shortages across the province. And that's something we keep hearing on the news and even with announcements with the ministry. And so today we are delighted to have Superintendent Peterson and her team, Director Nicole Lefrenier and Consultant Megan Lapp, who will share more about the exciting opportunities that are coming to Edmonton Catholic.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Chair Palazzo and trustees. As Chief Superintendent Anderson has stated, Alberta's growing demand for skilled trades is driving innovation in education. And Edmonton Catholic Schools is proud to be leading the way in this. In the 2025-2026 school year, we are launching Saint Allegius Catholic Collegiate, named after the patron saint of metalworkers, a fitting symbol for our commitment to hands-on, career-focused learning. Collegiate program, programming offers students the opportunity to gain apprentice level education while still in high school. Through formal agreements with NATE and industry partners such as Boiler Makers Lodge 146, CLAC and UA Local 488, students will earn dual credits towards both high school graduation and apprenticeship certification. This initiative directly addresses Alberta's looming skill shortage and aligns with the minister's mandate. At this time, I will invite Nicole Lefrenier, Director of Curriculum and Assessment, and Megan Lapp, Apprenticeship and Collegiate Consultant, to the podium.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, trustees. We are, as Superintendent Peterson said, very excited to begin this year, Saint Allegius Catholic Collegiate. And we are, sorry, just to move the, there we go. All of a sudden I was on the screen and that was a little disconcerting.
You look fantastic.
Oh, thank you.
We like seeing you on the screen.
Oh, thank you so much. As Superintendent Peterson said, collegiate programming is the opportunity to gain apprenticeship level education while students are in high school. And that, those collegiate schools provide specialized programming in a particular subject area or field and offer students clear pathways into post-secondary education and/or careers. Formal agreements with publicly funded post-secondary institutions and with industry partners are required. We wanted to pursue collegiate programming for a few reasons. First, as already mentioned, we do have a looming skill shortage here in Alberta. And we do have a mandate letter from our Minister of Education referring to this improvements in skills programming. But we also know from looking at our data across the division that hands-on programming in student interest and aptitude is really linked to this type of programming. We also took a deep dive into our own data through our assurance. And in looking at the overall rating for high school transitions, we noted that our transition rate to post-secondary is considered high, but it has declined. Our transition rate is acceptable. But in establishing the collegiate with clear transitions to NATE and to the apprenticeship stream through the support of our industry partners, ECSD can better serve our students and families and improve those transition rates to post-secundaries. We also want to better target the perception of our community in how we're preparing students for that transition to the world of work when they graduate. Currently, in looking at our assurance data, the perception that we're teaching students the attitudes and behaviors that will make them successful at work when they finish high school is overall high, but declined significantly and has been identified as an issue. Collegiate programming is one way we're targeting these measures on our assurance framework. Interestingly, when we had parents come for our council for COSC, our session that our consultants provided on post-high school career transitions was one of our most highly subscribed, which tells us that parents and families are really interested and eager to learn more about this type of programming. Our process, as we began this application, was through an analysis of all high school contexts. We considered all of the programming across all of the high schools throughout the city. And we considered what current infrastructure we had that we would be able to build upon. We also wanted to look at a pathway for equity and access throughout the city and create a proposal that would allow for program growth. When we analyzed our data, and we've had the registered apprenticeship program for, for many years in Alberta, we didn't see enrollment consistent with the interest in trades programming. We realized through some of the engagement that we did that we needed to improve access to programming within the school day timetable. Students are often, through the RAP program, required to spend full days with an employer. And that simply was a barrier that students couldn't overcome within the, within the traditional school day. And similarly, they identified transportation to and from a job site as a major barrier because students don't have access to a car or many businesses are not easily accessible by public transportation. So by offering career preparation programs via an umbrella collegiate model, students will be able to access trades and careers programming at a school site during the school day. I'll now turn it over to our apprenticeship and collegiate consultant, Megan Lapp, to describe this year's programming.
Thank you very much, Director Lefrenier and Superintendent Peterson. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, trustees and Chief Superintendent Anderson. We are so very pleased to announce that our collegiate application has been approved by Alberta Education. As of this September, Edmonton Catholic Schools now offers two collegiate programs. Welding Apprenticeship at Saint Oscar Romero Catholic High School and Pipe Trades Apprenticeship at Archbishop O'Leary Catholic High School. The courses taught in the Saint Allegius Apprenticeship Programs are single-enrolled, dual-credit courses that fall under the CTS apprenticeship pathway. These courses are aligned with the topics covered in first-period in-class apprenticeship training. Saint Allegius students are learning a post-secondary curriculum, the same content that is taught at post-secondary institutions. This means that students will earn credit towards both high school and apprenticeship training. Our collegiate students may also enroll in the registered apprenticeship program or RAP and earn hours before, during or after taking these collegiate courses. I would like to draw your attention to this photo, which shows our pipe trades teacher working directly with a student apprentice. Saint Allegius apprenticeship programs are taught by incredibly specialized Edmonton Catholic School Division teachers who also have journey person certification in their designated trades. The Saint Oscar Romero program is designed to help prepare students for a successful career as a welder. And it is the only high school welding apprenticeship program in Edmonton. Instruction is provided by a teacher who is also a journey person, red seal welder. The teacher is shown in this photo, which again highlights the importance of the teacher-student relationship. Students who are interested in learning how to weld will start in fabrication 10. Students who successfully complete all fabrication 10 modules and who display the interests and competencies required to pursue a career in welding will receive a special letter inviting them to join the welding apprenticeship stream. This approach is modeled after how the school invites students to participate in the advanced placement program. At the end of the program, students will have the opportunity to take the first-year apprenticeship exam. Upon passing the exam and completing their on-the-job hours, students will achieve second-year recognition as welders, which gives them a significant head start in the industry. Archbishop O'Leary hosts the only high school pipe trades apprenticeship program in Edmonton. The courses in this program cover the common training for four pipe trades. Gas fitter, plumber, sprinkler systems installer and steam fitter, pipe fitter. This program is taught by a teacher who is also a red seal, journey ticketed steam fitter and journey ticketed B gas fitter. After taking the two courses in the pipe trades program, students will have the opportunity to take the first-year apprenticeship exam, which again can provide students with a real head start on a career pathway. As you have heard today, formal partnerships are an essential component of collegiate programming. We are so thankful for the support of our post-secondary institution partner, NATE, and for the support of our industry partners. Boiler Makers Lodge 146, the Christian Labor Association of Canada, or CLAC, and UA Local 488. We have signed two articulation agreements with NATE that will allow eligible collegiate students to receive transfer credit to certain NATE diploma programs. For welding, the Advanced Welding Technology Diploma Program. And for pipe trades, the Advanced Plumbing Technology Diploma Program. Qualified students who complete one of our collegiate programs will be able to enter directly into the second term of the corresponding program at NATE. This is one possible pathway for students. Our ECSD collegiate graduates could also pursue the apprenticeship pathway. Thank you, NATE, for supporting our students as they continue their educational journeys. Two industry partners will be supporting the Saint Allegius Welding Apprenticeship Program, the Boiler Makers and CLAC. Welding Apprenticeship students have been invited to participate in a field trip to the Boiler Makers Lodge 146 facility. During this event, students will receive a tour and will learn more about the industry, the role of boiler makers and the wide variety of career opportunities in the metal trades. Collegiate students will also be strongly encouraged to participate in the annual River City Weld Off. This event serves as a skill-building opportunity for students as they spend a day welding while engaging in friendly competition. We are very appreciative of our partnership with the Boiler Makers and we look forward to providing our students with the opportunity to learn about the metal trades in an industry setting. Our other welding partner is CLAC, who has its own cohort of welding apprentices. We have discussed having the CLAC apprentices serve as guest speakers for our students while sharing their experiences in industry. We are also planning for our students to shadow the CLAC apprentices at their facility. Through these guest speaking and shadowing opportunities, our welding apprenticeship students will be made aware of the various services offered by CLAC, such as finding job placements, earning safety credentials and engaging in work readiness skills. We are grateful for CLAC's support of our collegiate programming and we are excited to see where this partnership leads. UA Local 488 is our industry partner for the Archbishop O'Leary Pipe Trades Program. Our pipe trades teacher has a very strong relationship with UA Local 488 and this has been instrumental to the partnership. Each semester, pipe trades 25 students spend five full school days at the UA Local 488 facility. This field trip provides students with the opportunity to try different types of equipment and processes in an industrial setting. Students will also learn about career possibilities in the pipe trades and programs offered through UA Local 488. We are very thankful for UA Local 488's support of our pipe trades program. Once again, post-secondary and industry partners, please accept our deepest thanks for your continued support of our collegiate programming. I would now like to turn it back to Director Lefrenier to continue our presentation.
Thank you, Consultant Lapp. As we considered our programming, we needed to also
we needed to also think about how our communication throughout the division would function. And so we are looking at augmenting our marketing materials, using social media to highlight hands-on opportunities so that parents and students can see what those opportunities might be in the future. We have provided My Blueprint, which is a school and career planning tool from grade seven through 12 to encourage students to begin thinking about their career pathways. We also enjoy a partnership with Careers Next Generation, partnership with our colleagues in alternative education, working with students to increase awareness of possibilities throughout the division. And we are working very closely as well with our friends in educational planning to work on some engagement with students and families to explore potential programming areas throughout the division. As we look down the road, we want to also consider how we might possibly expand in the future. And so a few areas that we are looking at include mechanics, cosmetology, construction, auto body, culinary arts, and heavy-duty mechanics. As you can see, these opportunities are wide and they're varied, and we think are going to be very interesting to students. So we need to plan out very carefully where these will exist. We would be remiss if we didn't also talk about some pieces of potential advocacy for our trustees. And what we really want to do is look at how we can remove any potential barriers to programming so that students can access this programming across the division. Collegiate and specialized programming such as this requires small class sizes with very large lab spaces. They require specialized equipment and journey person teachers. So as an example, at St. Oscar Romero, one of our classes in welding is full. We are very excited to have it fully subscribed, but a fully subscribed program means 12 students. So that is a very small teacher-to-student ratio. And it does require someone who has that qualification as a journey person. And so those people can be very, very challenging to find. We work very closely with our friends in Human Resources to encourage applications, particularly in the bridge to teacher programming, but that requires a lengthy runway, and so it is difficult to program for or to plan for. Block funding is challenging for high schools to maintain equipment and staffing, particularly to an apprenticeship level. So as another example with the welding, we did require some augmented equipment because apprenticeships require that level of equipment. And so we needed to purchase, and thankfully, we had a grant from Alberta Education in order to do so. But that is an example of some programming needs that would exceed that of a typical high school. Additional grants are minimal with limited ability to address a large school division's needs. With more than 51,000 students now, we have a lot of students who would like to access this type of programming, and we want to make sure that we are affording that in an equitable manner. And one possible idea is looking at establishing provincial partnerships through advanced education, so working with cross-ministries in order to establish some potential partnerships that would ease the way for school divisions to potentially provide this programming to our students. And I'd like to turn it back to Superintendent Peterson to make the recommendation.
Thank you, Director LaFrenier and Consultant Lapp. At this time, I would like to turn it back to Chief Superintendent Anderson for the recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent Peterson, and I want to acknowledge our partners that are still here and the work of our team, and we know that we have learning services represented. But I also want to acknowledge educational planning and facilities who played roles in making sure that everything was ready to offer these opportunities to our students, and they're so valuable that they can make connections to post-secondary and industry. And it's just exciting to think about all these future possible expansions as well. So this is just the beginning, in my opinion. And so the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive this update on the division's collegiate programs.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, Superintendents Peterson and Fiakel, of course, Director LaFrenier and Consultant Lapp. Thank you for the great presentation today. And of course, our extraordinary valued partners who are still with us today, thank you very much. Our new collegiate, as we've heard, supports the Minister of Education and Childcare's mandate letter in cooperation with the Minister of Advanced Education. And so we've heard very clearly that not only are these programs, not only will these programs encourage our students into trades, but they will, of course, provide dual-credit programs, apprenticeship pathways, and initiatives in career studies that we can be proud of. Commendations on this brilliant initiative that prioritizes career and trades in education and skilled workers because it will create a dual advantage, both provincially for our provincial economy and for our students. So thank you. I know that there are so many of our students who always say, "I don't know what I want to do after grade 12." And so this is a really great opportunity for them to see if this is something that they would be interested in. So it's just an excellent, excellent initiative for all of us. Now, before reading the recommendation, I do see Trustees in queue. Vice Chair Chachansky, you're first. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say quickly, thank you for the opportunity for us to meet our partners. It's extraordinary. To be able to put faces to names is really important to us. The idea that there is some advocacy that needs to go forward, because I think when you look at this, what an opportunity. It reminds me in the old days, I lived in the South Side, so I'd see Harry Ainsley Composite High, and I was thinking, "Oh, like so great in there, like all this stuff that you can do." And it reminds me now why that was so important back then, to give our students an opportunity to see what's out there, because not everybody is meant for university or a specific pathway. So to offer a lot of our students, you know, just a bit of a chance to dip a toe into this is extraordinary. And it's funny when you say a 12-person classroom is full, right? I think, "Oh, gosh, what a shame," because this would be lovely to open up. So I love the idea of the future thoughts and where we're going with this, and we are all in, because this is something that I see pretty extraordinary for a lot of students, because, like I say, not everybody walks down the middle. And I love the opportunity that kids can have a taste of this and then really find where their future lies. So thank you to our partners and everybody with education. And I, Advanced Ed looks even better. I'm looking forward to all this. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Chachansky. Trustee Engel, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
I remember the days when Boris Radjo was in planning, and he and I made many, many, many trips to NATE because we were looking at a collegiate there. And in many of the meetings we had, Glenn, I'm trying to remember his last name. Anyway, the president of NATE made such a compelling... Thank you. Yes, it was. Made such a compelling speech for this type of collegiate because we have AP programs and we have IB programs, and those allow academic students to get ahead of their university education, which those sessions are really packed. And he was telling us how important it was, and that was, I don't know how many years ago. So it's so great to see and to listen to this presentation because it takes me back to, I think Jeff Johnson was the Minister of Education, and we sat in the room every week for a couple hours for months. And it kind of all went, I'm not, you know, many, many different reasons. But to hear this today is just absolutely great. Thank you so much to all of you involved in the presentation and in making this work, and thank you to our partners. Together, we can really do some great things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. Next in queue is Trustee Tibere. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I see a bridge, a really big, beautiful bridge. And on one side are classrooms, teachers, like learning, students, hopes and dreams. And on the other side, I see careers, I see independence, and full of possibilities. And the collegiate is that bridge over. And it's through these really truly valuable partnerships with the mentorship and the hands-on experience, you know, and it's taking one step at a time and moving with purpose and confidence across. So thank you very much for partnering with us. And on a personal note, as a business owner who runs a very growing repair, maintenance, and small construction company, I cannot thank you enough for taking the time to step with the partners with Edmonton Catholic School students. And it's our next generation of skilled workers who will be what makes our world turn. And it is more and more evident as, you know, we are looking and people are looking for, you know, the possibilities of the trades and what they can do. It is something that I'm so grateful and thankful that we're focusing on and working with our Edmonton Catholic students in order to really start them on an excellent path that really will open up an entire lifetime career of different possibilities, whether it's really, really big, you know, big construction, big companies, or just doing the small stuff. That is so important to keep buildings operating that this is exactly what we need. So again, I really want to thank everybody and just to be able to contribute to that workforce and within a Catholic education environment, I think is so important. We are taking what, you know, are God-given talents, and we are really making a difference in so many different lives. And you won't even know at this point how many lives you're going to make a difference in. So I fully support it. I love the advocacy points, and I do believe that we are on to something big and beautiful here. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Tibere. Next in queue is Trustee Harris. Go ahead, please.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. I very much like how this aligns, obviously, with the provincial initiatives in this area. There's no question that many, many students will see these as phenomenal opportunities. There's always been that lingering kind of sensibility in the community about the trades, right? And a lot of work going on, and therefore, that's why I love the signals coming out of the province and the trades now about, you know, helping our community understand that the trades and technologies as a first choice, a rare alternative for Canadian youth, a first choice. That so many of our students, this is where they want to go, this is where they should go. And so oftentimes, their parents might say, "But you got to go this way," right? Or "This is my expectation," when in fact, these are phenomenal careers, right? So I really applaud the province for these kinds of signals. And I see the partnerships that are forming, and I know the trades have been working on this for years. I know Careers Next Generation, Skills Canada have always been all about how do we, you know, enhance the profile of the trades and technologies as a first-choice career alternative for Canadian youth. I do see, of course, the reason why we need to move forward with respect to this collegiate idea and creating a couple of opportunities. One thing that's always impressed me about the division is how it pilots and then looks at opportunities to scale up after it learns about things. So, and some of the challenges that you mentioned about the specialized skills, instructors, the small class sizes, the big equipment costs, those kinds of things certainly would make it very, very tough for a school budget unless you somehow figure out a framework and consolidate. And that makes it much more real. So I want to applaud you for doing that and want to really express appreciation to our partners for collaborating with us on this initiative. And it's nice to be working together with you. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Trustee Harris. And seeing no one else in queue, I'll read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees received this update on the division's collegiate programs. Thank you very much to all of you, and especially to our valued partners for being here today. Thank you. Next on the agenda is 2.2 renaming... Yes, and please, if you feel like you need to leave, don't feel like you need to stay. I wasn't going to say a word, so I'm glad that... Yeah, thank you so much. Next on the agenda is 2.2 renaming Blessed Carlo Acutis Catholic High School. And over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you very much. And so as a reminder, on February 22, 2023, the Board of Trustees named our new Catholic high school in Dunluce after Blessed Carlo Acutis, patron of youth and computer programs and World Youth Day 2023. Among typical teen interests, Blessed Carlo Acutis liked video games, computer programming, making home movies about his cats and dogs, and he also loved the Eucharist. And what he did, he loved the Eucharist in the most profound way, where he took this love for the Eucharist and found a way to evangelize in a space in which he was able to transmit God using his computer skills. He designed an online Eucharistic miracles exhibition that is now translated into 17 languages and has been displayed across the world. And so Carlos Acutis has been a model for all our youth today. Most recently, on September 7, 2025, Blessed Carlo Acutis was canonized in Rome and is now Saint Carlo Acutis. He is the first millennial saint, and this will further model for our youth that it is possible to answer the call to sainthood in our modern world. And so our recommendation is that the Board of Trustees rename Blessed Carlo Acutis Catholic High School to Saint Carlo Acutis Catholic High School in celebration and honor of his canonization.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, for bringing this recommendation to our public board meeting. Now, I was in Rome this past summer, so I didn't say anything about O'Leary at the last agenda, so you've got to let me gloat now. I was in Rome this past summer as going to the Vatican and experiencing the Jubilee was a bucket item list, which I was able to check off. And while there, and knowing that the canonization was about to happen, gave those of us present an opportunity to experience the hope and the feeling blessed to welcome the Catholic Church's first millennial saint. Now, I do need to point out that this saint is Italian, like me. And being a former North End high school teacher and administrator who advocated hard for this high school to be a reality, and the fact that this school name was my number-one choice makes me feel extremely privileged. As inspiring young people through Saint Carlo Acutis's relatable personality, including the use of internet, as we've heard here today, to spread faith with many looking to him for intercession and guidance in a complex world is truly a gift from God. And as this is a motion, I do need one of our trustees to come forward to please make this motion. And Trustee Mutala, you're first in queue. Go ahead, please.
Hey, I would love to make this motion. I move that the Board of Trustees rename Blessed Carlo Acutis High School to Saint Carlo Acutis Catholic High School in celebration and honor of his canonization.
Thank you.
And I'm not going to say anything else because Chair Palazzo said it all. But my only thing is, I wish that our school was ready so that it could have been open the same year that he became a saint, like this year, like 2025.
For sure. Well, you know what? The good thing is, is that now we just get to keep talking about it.
I know.
So that's great. Thank you very much, Trustee Mutala. Trustee Engel, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
I was going to make the motion, but I'm thrilled.
Thank you very much. Trustee Harris, I did see you in queue. If you could put yourself, oh, as you were going to make the motion as well. Okay, thank you. And so seeing as though I don't see any other trustees in queue, Trustee Mutala, out of courtesy, I will turn it back to you should you wish to close your motion at this time. Thank you. And so at this time, we will call the vote. So Trustee Engel, maybe, did you want... Okay, thank you very much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion is carried. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is 2.3, naming of schools, and I'm pleased to read the background. Naming of our new Catholic schools and the Rundle Replacement School. Our division is pleased to have six schools currently under construction, which necessitates that we name them in accordance with our administrative procedure. The locations of the new school are Catholic Kadenine School in Cavanagh Heritage Valley, 30th Avenue and Cavanagh Gateway Southwest; Catholic Kadenine School in Cristalina Nera East, 71 Street and 178 Avenue Northwest; Catholic Kadenine School in Hays Ridge, 31 Avenue and Hays Ridge Drive. Drive Southwest, Catholic K-9 School in Rivers Edge, 23rd Avenue and 199 Street Northwest, Catholic K-9 School in West Laurel, 30th Street and 178 Avenue Northwest, Catholic K-9 Consolidation School in Rundle Heights, 34th Street and 107 Avenue Northwest. As per administrative procedure 544, naming of facilities, the division has established a list of names for schools and division facilities that is in keeping with the policies and procedures of the Catholic Archdiocese of Edmonton, which has been approved by Archbishop Smith, our former Archbishop. And before reading the recommendation on behalf of the Board, we do wish to applaud our Chief Superintendent, Administration, and the Committee for your work and diligence to the process, and the recommendation is as follows. That the Board of Trustees approves the following names for our new schools. Saint Sophia Catholic Elementary Junior High School for Cavanagh Heritage Valley, Our Lady of Hope Catholic Elementary Junior High School for Cristalina Nera East, Saint Michael the Archangel Catholic Elementary Junior High School for Hayes Ridge, Saint Patrick Catholic Elementary Junior High School for Rivers Edge, Saint Genevieve Catholic Elementary Junior High School for West Laurel, and Saint Nicholas Catholic Elementary Junior High School for Rundle Heights. And as this is a motion, I am looking for a trustee, and I do see Trustee Engel in queue, to please make this motion. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Madam Chair, now I don't have the motion in front of me. I've got to get my phone out. I just thought Eileen would beat me. That the Board of Trustees approves the following names of our new schools. Saint Sophia Catholic Elementary, Our Lady of Hope Catholic Elementary Junior High, Saint Michael the Archangel Catholic Elementary Junior High, Saint Patrick Catholic Elementary Junior High School, Saint Genevieve Catholic Elementary Junior High, and Saint Nicholas Catholic Elementary Junior High. Did I need to read again all the things you read twice?
No, I think we're good. But I will ask you, Trustee Engel, if you wish to speak to your motion.
I guess this is, I've just got a few quick comments. I'm really excited that Saint Patrick was the name chosen for the K-9 School in Ward 74. Saint Patrick is the patron saint of Ireland and a guide for missionaries and educators. It's a wonderful choice for a school name. His life shows courage, faith, and dedication to teaching others about Christ qualities, and he perfectly reflects the mission of our district. So it couldn't be more perfect for one of the schools in our district, Saint Patrick.
Thank you very much, Trustee Engel. Now, I do see other trustees in queue and I, you know, I'm going to turn it to them first, but I, and I'm not even going to fight you on these names. I love them all, but I do have some favorites, but I love the school that's being named after mine. So Vice Chair Chachansky, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too want to just say thank you very much for the process. It was extraordinary. And we were reminded that names mean something to our schools and our families and our students. So it's interesting, some of the names that are on the list, although were deep, you know, really resonated deeply with us, when you think about it further, you know, doesn't necessarily translate into an excellent school with a great, kind of a little oof behind it. So we appreciate really the guidance that we had. The choice, of course, is always up to the trustees, but it's very nice to be sort of, I guess, guided in some of our reflection. I'm particularly grateful that I had two schools to name and that my school names got ahead of Sandra Palazzo's. I'm grateful for that, always. And I'm grateful that I have some extraordinary schools, and we actually have schools that we are able to open and name. We need many, many more, as you've heard. Anytime we want to do any kind of our apprentice programs and so forth going forward, clearly we need more spaces. But we are grateful for what we have. We need a whole bunch more. Our facility services is ready to help us, and sorry I picked your names.
It's all good. It's all good. I just want everybody to know that in addition that they picked all the names, and she had two schools. Saint Patrick's was my elementary.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, which is great. I'm so glad that we got it. I'm glad that we got a Saint Patrick's back in the division, right? It was such a great school, but they're all great names. I agree. Trustee Taber, you're next in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when you're naming a school, it's about a connection that it brings to you. It's not just a name. It's a memory. It's, you know, something that, you know, pulls on your heartstrings or gives you a connection to, just to different things that come up. And it was very evident, because we talked to our student voice about names, and it was very enlightening to hear their perspective on, you know, we didn't dive really deep into their lives and we didn't go that route, but to, when you hear it, it brings back a memory. And then to hear their perspective of how they perceive it, I thought was beyond valuable because I'd never, I couldn't connect to half the stuff they talked about. And I was like, oh, okay, yeah, I can see that now, but that's not the way I was coming at it. And this are kids that are going to be in the school for, you know, whether it's seven years, three years, longer, shorter. It's their memory and it's their connection. And I think having to be able to name these, this many schools was truly amazing. Thank you so much to the government. Student spaces, as you know, are at a critical high, and that being said, we need more. It's not only these, and I do appreciate the comments that we are site-ready and we are willing and ready and able to really create the best learning environments for our students. But that's not what this motion is about. This motion is about names, and I really appreciate and I really thank all our student voices who were able to give us a perspective at that loss.
Thank you very much, Trustee Taber. And you know what? You're right. We do have a lot more names that we can pick from. So if they give us the schools, we have many names that we can use to name them. Seeing no one else in queue, before turning it back to you, Trustee Engel, I will insert myself and applaud the recommendation once again. These names reflect the enduring values of our Catholic faith, hope, courage, wisdom, and service. Each namesake offers a powerful example for our students and staff, and we continue to build communities rooted in faith. Deepest gratitude to all. And Trustee Engel, I will turn it back to you should you wish to close your motion at this time.
No, I just loved your comment about we've got lots of names.
Thank you very much. And so we will now call the vote, please. Thank you so much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, the motion is carried and we now have our names for our new schools. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, yes. That certainly deserves applause. Now, we will now proceed to the last agenda item under business of the meeting, board policy revisions. And I would, I'm going to ask that General Counsel Carbonic, please provide the background and further information to the Board as to the specific nature of the amendments, as well as the process by which the Board is required to follow in order to amend policies of this nature. General Counsel Carbonic, thank you for coming, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board is well-versed in amending their board policy over this past term, so I won't go into too much detail in terms of the board memo that is part of your package. But as you all know, you have an obligation through your board policy to review board policies on a regular basis. And through some work that you did at your spring board retreat, we've brought forward some amendments to Board Policy 12, which is the role of the Chief Superintendent, and Board Policy 12 Appendix B, which is the Chief Superintendent Performance Assessment Guide. Board Policy 10 governs the process by which you are able to update your processes or your policies, excuse me, and we can do that via three readings at one meeting, so long as you have unanimous approval after the second reading to proceed to third. So, or Chair Palazzo will lead you through that process now, and then we'll go from there and see how that goes.
Thank you very much. In light of General Counsel Carbonic's explanation, I am looking for one of my colleagues to please make this motion, and I do see Vice Chair Chachansky in queue. And so Vice Chair Chachansky, I'm going to ask that you please move ahead and with first reading.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment of Board Policy 12 as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing of this motion.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion, Vice Chair Chachansky?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I will now open queue to the rest of the Board, and seeing none, I will turn it back to you in the event that you should wish to close your motion.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. And so at this time, I will call the vote. Thank you so much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, I will note for the record that the motion has passed. Vice Chair Chachansky, would you like to move second reading of the proposed policy changes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment of Board Policy 12 as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing this motion.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
And once again, I will provide courtesy to the Board should anybody wish to speak or have questions. And seeing none, I'm out of courtesy again. I will turn it back to you, Vice Chair Chachansky, should you wish to close your motion.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so at this time, we will once again call the vote. Thank you. Once again, as all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion is carried. At this time, I will call, well, I already called the vote, so let's move on to proceed to third and final reading of the policy amendments. Trustees in attendance must provide unanimous approval to do so. Vice Chair Chachansky, would you like to seek unanimous approval of the Board to move to third reading of the amendment to Board Policy 12?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees unanimously approve a motion to proceed to third reading of the motion to move to third reading, oh, sorry, of Board Policy 12 as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing this motion.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Once again, affording the Board the opportunity to ask questions, and seeing none, I'll turn it back to you. I don't assume that you'd like to close your motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. Thank you so much. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we will note for the record that the motion is carried. Thank you. And at this time, I will call on Vice Chair Chachansky once again to move to third reading. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment of Board Policy 12 as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing of this motion.
Thank you. And would you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so, once again, affording the Board any opportunity? No, seeing none. I'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair Chachansky. I assume not.
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and we will call the vote. Thank you. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion is carried. Thank you so much, General Counsel Carbonic, for your advisement in the process. We've, obviously, you're right, we've learned how to move forward under your advisement, and we'll turn it back to you to proceed to amend Board Policy 12 Appendix B.
Okay, Madam Chair, through to, or Madam Chair, Board Policy 12 Appendix B is the Chief Superintendent Performance Assessment Guide, and as you just went through your process, you go through a similar process for the amendment of this policy.
Thank you so much. And so I'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair Chachansky, to please pass first reading of the proposed amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment of Board Policy 12 Appendix B as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing this motion.
Thank you. Do you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And calling on the Board, should there be any questions and/or comments? And seeing none, turn it back to you, Vice Chair Chachansky, should you wish to close your motion at this time?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so we will call the vote. Thank you. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion is carried. And so at this time, we'll move it back to you, Vice Chair Chachansky. Would you like to move to second reading of the proposed policy changes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment of Board Policy 12 Appendix B as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing of this motion.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And once again, affording the Board the opportunity, opening queue, and seeing none, we'll turn it back to you, Vice Chair Chachansky, should you wish to close?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so we will move to calling the vote. Thank you. Once again, as all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion is carried. In order to proceed to third and final reading of the policy amendments, trustees in attendance must provide unanimous approval to do so. Vice Chair Chachansky, would you like to seek unanimous approval to the Board to move to third reading of the amendment to Policy 12 Appendix B?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees unanimously approve a motion to proceed to the third reading of the motion to move to third reading of the amendment to Board Policy 12 Appendix B as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees upon passing of this motion.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Affording the Board the opportunity, and seeing none, turn it back to you. Do you wish to close?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we will now call the vote. Thank you. As all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the record that the motion is carried. We'll now turn it back to you, Vice Chair Chachansky, to proceed to the third reading. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approve the amendment of Board Policy 12 Appendix B as attached and circulated to the Board of Trustees effective upon passing this motion.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to your motion?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And seeing no one else in, oh, I do see Trustee Engel in queue. Go ahead, please. I'm glad I asked.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the comment that setting board policy is a very important responsibility of the Board and that we didn't just, Legal Counsel Carbonic kindly works with us with all the ins and outs when we change policy and what it means, and we have a very fulsome discussion and question period, but if we did that and repeated it here today, I think Legal Counsel Carbonic might leave. So I just wanted to make that, that in case somebody was sitting there thinking, gee, isn't that what you guys do, set policy?
No. And thank you, thank you for the clarity there. And she's absolutely right. It's a very robust process. It's not something that was done in one meeting. This has taken months to get to. But of course, we have to, everything is provided publicly, there's transparency involved and accountability, and so today it's a matter of publicly showing our Edmonton Catholic schools and of course our families and constituents that we do follow process. And of course, General Counsel Carbonic here is here to ensure that we're doing it right. And if we didn't, we'd be called on it, trust me. So thank you so much. So Trustee, Vice Chair Chachansky, thank you. We did have a question in motion here, and so at this time, we will call the vote. Thank you. And as all trustees have voted or once again in favor, the motion has passed. Now, I'm thinking we're at the end, correct?
Chair Palazzo, we are at the end of the process. I would also, just to build upon Trustee Engel's comments, I would like to thank at this time the tremendous effort and support that both Executive Director Susan McCauley and Corporate Secretary Courtney Nakarado provide to this process.
Thank you.
I get to sit up here and do this with you, but they do all the work behind the scenes.
Thank you very much. And I was just about to thank them, but thank you for recognizing that because when it comes from legal counsel, from General Counsel, it's even that much more powerful and means so much more. So thank you so much for that. Yeah, thank you. And so this now takes us to 3.1, Board Chair Report, and I'm honored to read the report on behalf of our Board of Trustees. And because it is the last one, indulge me a little bit here, the last one of the term, that is. As we begin the 2025-2026 school year, we warmly welcome our students, families, and staff. My fellow trustees and I are filled with gratitude for the energy and spirit that continue to shine in our schools. Each new year brings fresh opportunities for growth, learning, and community, and we're excited to see what lies ahead and offer a special welcome to all of our new administrators, teachers, and support staff. The gifts and talents and dedication of our staff is a true blessing to our division. The steady growth of our division is a clear sign of how strongly our families continue to choose Catholic education for their children, which is attributed to the excellence of our staff and administration. Trustees recently attended site blessings for the future, Cavanagh Heritage Valley, Hayes Ridge, and Cristalina Nera East, K-9, so this includes what we did back in June, and toured the site of Saint Josephine Bakita. These moments are more than milestones in construction. They stand as visible reminders of the increasing demand for Catholic education in our city. Each new school site represents hope, faith, and opportunity for the many students who will be shaped by the gift of Catholic education in the years ahead. We wish to thank all of our parents, our guardians, our students, our teachers, our administrators, our staff for your continued support of Edmonton Catholic Schools as we journey forward collaboratively and in partnership. The year ahead holds much promise, and together as people of hope, we will continue to nurture the faith and learning of every student in Edmonton Catholic Schools. And at this time, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our Board of Trustees, whose faith, commitment, and dedication whose faith, commitment, and dedication is immeasurable. To define this board, you would describe them as diverse individuals with a wide range of expertise who work collaboratively in a culture of respect and trust to provide strategic leadership and oversight for the division as a whole. They set the vision, manage risks, and make informed, future-oriented decisions by engaging with stakeholders, focusing on high-level strategy, and holding themselves accountable through regular evaluation, self-evaluation. We were only able to achieve our many successes because of our trust and support in one another. We covered for each other at events. We ensured that we had board representation, and we shared our advocacy efforts everywhere we traveled. And we were able to overcome challenges and have some of our advocacy efforts actually become reality because of our faith and our deep commitment to the students, the staff, and the families of Edmonton Catholic Schools. I pro, I, I used to pride, I still pride myself that I bleed ECSD, but today, after eight years, I am proud to share that this board equally bleeds Edmonton Catholic Schools. I applaud each and every one of you for being authentic and transparent in your decision-making. And I think that, and I do need to say this, never in eight years have I ever seen personal interests at stake here. It was always for the students and the staff, and I want to applaud each of you for that. Each trustee came prepared to discuss assessments, academic and survey results, legislation, fiscal responsibility, and that's just to name a few. Most importantly, promoting, preserving, and protecting Catholic education. This board of trustees is a board of distinction, and they are the epitome of best governance practice. We've been told by several boards across Alberta, as well as by evaluators and PD specialists, that they, we are achieving a standard of excellence. And so while we say that it takes a village to achieve success, this board hits the mark on all categories and for proudly sharing our ECSD narrative and bringing it to life. And while there are good boards, there's powerful and effective boards, and the latter is what this board is exemplified at. You embody skill that requires vision, creativity, and passion, and you have managed to intrigue and capture the attention of our schools, our community, and government, advancing our mission to another level. Kudos to all of you for making hashtag ECSD, Faith Inspires, something to be proud of. And I'm honored to call myself a trustee with each of you, good and faithful servants. Thank you for creating a legacy of excellence, one that I am proud to be affiliated with. And I'm proud to read the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Board Chair Report on EC, hashtag ECSD, Faith Inspires, June 13 to September 11, 2025, for information purposes. And I do see Vice Chair Chachansky in queue, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You just, I'm sorry, you do need to indulge me for a moment also. I do need to thank Chief Superintendent Anderson for allowing us some of these opportunities, and more importantly, our staff. The fact that we get to go, and it is a joy and a privilege, to events, part of our job, the meet the teachers, the welcome back barbecues, and when I look at this list, I, I actually just want to keep smiling when I go through everything, because it's such an opportunity for us to see how our division works, not just in the meat and the potatoes and the meetings and the board policy changes, but our One World One Center. To see an event where we have different parents from all walks of life, different languages, meeting together, to, to learn how to be a family in Edmonton Catholic and what's available to them, it is just amazing, and it is joyful. And I, I can tell you, every place I go, my kids just laugh at me because I keep smiling, and it's joyful. And it takes a bazillion hours out of our day, but it is the greatest of the bazillion hours. And it is remarkable to be able to stand with our staff and my colleagues and, and celebrate our faith alongside each other at masses, at school liturgies, and a variety of things. So, thank you. Thank you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, to afford us the opportunity to do that and let us be the trustees that we always wanted to be, advocates, and standing shoulder to shoulder with all of our staff and our partners. So, so thank you to you. This is pretty, pretty remarkable. It's been an extraordinary role, as, as Trustee Harris has said, and, you know, I can hardly wait to continue this for our students and our staff going forward. So thank you.
Thank you very much for those, that beautiful tribute and contributions to Chief Superintendent Anderson and to all of our, our division. Thank you. Here, here. We'll now move on to 3.2, Chief Superintendent Report, and we'll turn it over to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And what a, what a great, great segue, as a lot of the items that I'm going to bring forward as, as highlights, you have been there with us and with our staff. So, so thank you for pointing that out, and we are grateful to have your support. And so 2025-2026 has been off to a great start, and it is marked with great hope. As you know, our division theme for the year continues to be People of Hope, and it echoes that of the Catholic Church's Jubilee Year, Pilgrims of Hope. And so I'll highlight a few things under our division priorities. Under Living Our Faith, as we do every year, division staff mark the beginning of the school year with Mass and a recommitment to Catholic education. We are grateful to have had the opportunity for this sacred time in now eight parishes. We have to keep adding parishes because we just keep growing. And the collection for this year's event was a total of 10,110, which will be shared jointly between Edmonton Catholic Schools Foundation and the Edmonton Eparchies Bridge of Hope. And we have another opening that we're looking forward to later this month, which is gathering with the community of St. Josephine Baquita Catholic Elementary Junior High School, and so another event where we can all gather together and celebrate. Under Learning Excellence, although many of us were enjoying vacation this summer, there was lots going on at Edmonton Catholic Schools. Summer school is so important for our students to fulfill their high school requirements and upgrade their marks. And this year, summer school saw a total of 4,116 course registrations, marking an increase compared to previous years. And so we are just delighted that we can support our students in many ways, and summer school being one of them. We also hosted an annual summer summit for elementary teachers who choose to take time away from their vacation, and we had 268 participants representing 67 different elementary schools. And we just want to thank Learning Services for what they offer. It's just incredible how they set our, our teachers up for success. And especially marking the critical launch of our new mandatory social studies curriculum, just being able to reassure our, our teachers that they have the support as they undertake this new curriculum and unpack what they need to do to, to teach that. Under Organizational Excellence, we had many hours spent with, trying to do, unpack the new legislation, and that would be the Education Act, the Fairness and Safety in Sports Act, and the selection, availability, and access of school literary materials. And so I really want to thank and acknowledge the work of General Counsel Carbonic, Executive Director Susan McCauley, and all our superintendents in each department and staff that helped develop the processes to enact this new legislation in, in our schools. And finally, under Embracing Diversity, we have been busy in One World One Center, welcoming families for registration, support, documentation, verification, administration of our benchmarks, student language assessments. As of September 9, a total of 976 students registered, with the largest number of newcomers, representing countries from the Philippines, several African countries, Ukraine, South America. We just want to really thank the staff at One World One Center, because they do create such a welcoming environment for these new families, and they, they want to connect them with services. And just last week, we hosted an event where I know many of the trustees participated, connecting our newcomers to different community partners, to our transportation department, mental health supports. And again, that's just the extra step we take to support a lot of our new families. So thank you again to Superintendent Peterson and your team for organizing that event. And thank you to the trustees for being there to welcome our new families. And so the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of Chief Superintendent's Report on hashtag ECSD, Faith Inspires, July to September 2025, for information purposes.
Thank you very much, Chief Superintendent Anderson, for your report, which continues to reinforce the exemplary highlights and activities that take place in our division, especially as they relate to division, our division priorities. And we applaud you. We applaud you and of course, your team's responsiveness to seeking improvement and growth, and for listening to the voices of our staff, our families, as it speaks volumes to ensuring the excellence and assurance that we look for as a division. We also highly applaud and commend your leadership of excellence in creating an environment of trust, support, and collaboration. And deepest gratitude to you, Chief Superintendent Anderson, and we also wish to applaud you as a good and faithful servant. Now, we also would like to take the opportunity to applaud our board office, our Board Secretary Courtney Nakarado, now where the Kleenex box comes out, and of course, Peter Hamden, for always being there for this board. You keep us organized, we're always ready to go, and extremely well taken care of, and it's because of the efforts of the people on our team that we're able to do that. And to the both of you, thank you. Thank you for everything that you have done for this Board of Trustees, and to you both. Well done, good and faithful servants. And with this, as this is not a motion, I take pride in reading the recommendation for the record that the Board of Trustees acknowledges receipt of the Chief Superintendent's Report on hashtag ECSD, Faith Inspires, July to September 2025, for information purposes. And before I do close, I just, there's one other, I see that our Vice President from the ATA, Owen Holloway, is still here, and you've been coming faithfully, and you wait up until the end, and I know that Amber just left not that long ago. Please, on behalf of the board, Vice President Owen, if you could share our deepest gratitude with her as well. To have the both of you here and represent teachers, especially with everything that's happening right now, is certainly, we look at you with heartfelt gratitude and appreciation, and we pray for you all. Thank you so much. And this takes us to 4.1, Closing Prayer, and I'll turn it over to you, Trustee Harris, to do that, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. If we could place ourselves in the presence of the Lord, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to be part of this beautiful learning community, Edmonton Catholic Schools. Thank you for this opportunity to be part of this beautiful story, the story of people coming together in your name, people learning together, working together, and praying together in a worthy cause, a cause that is the answer to the deepest heartfelt prayers of our parents and our community, a cause that supports our children, our amazing students, to become the very best version of themselves. Lord, we know you are with us always, always by our side, guiding us in ways everlasting. Help us, this division, this board, our schools, to be an instrument of your peace. We pray this through your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you very much for the beautiful prayers, Trustee Harris. And last on the agenda is 4.2, and we are looking for a motion to adjourn, and I do see Vice Chair Chachansky in queue. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if I don't close the meeting, Trustee Harris can never retire. Just kidding.
Thank you very much. And so I'm assuming you've always-
I'd like to move that we close the meeting.
Thank you very much. We will call the vote. Thank you. As all, as all trustees have voted and are in favor, we'll note for the motion that the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all once again, and on behalf of us all, we wish you all a wonderful rest of your evening, a fabulous 2025-26 school year, and thank you and blessings for each and every one of you for welcoming all of us into your lives and into your schools and into our division. May God bless you all. Thank you.